Hey, we're gonna go ahead and start with the program. It's not on, is it? Is it on now?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. We're gonna go with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will start the meeting off with the superintendent's report.
Good evening, President Dorsey, members of the board, community, Lakeside. We're excited to hear about you tonight. Board, since our last board meeting, you can see my activities listed there. I will let you take a look at those. I really just want to take my couple minutes tonight to... My heart is very happy right now. It's full of joy. There's been a lot of great activities happening in Warren Township that I want to share with you. One of those is gonna happen tonight. I want to thank LaShawna Triplet for her vision for the, I think, first ever peace walk in Warren Township. It was a very cold morning, and LaShawna came out in her boot on her motorized cart and led the way. And it may not have been as big as you dreamed it to be, but I think the first one is always the start of that. I apologize, I was not able to make the Fall Festival, but all of the pictures that we saw and the testimonies that were heard, it was an amazing event. So, thank you for your leadership with that and everybody else who was involved. I want to thank Kate Schwartz and her team. Kate, I know that there was a whole list of folks involved in the first ever Warren Educator Professional Learning Day on Election Day. It was an amazing event. We had student ambassadors walking around with staff. We had elementary teachers talking to high school teachers about things that are going on in the Career Center. We were able to showcase just so many great things that were going on in our district. And I told Kate, and I've told a lot of people this, the most beautiful thing about it was it was our educators in front of our educators helping each other out. So, Kate, kudos to you on that. I want to thank Doug Carter, Ryan Russell, really all of Cabinet for Envision Day 2. That was the next day. It was a busy week. And all of our community members and students that participated in that event. We are one step closer with our revision of our vision statement. We are one step closer to our revision of our jog skills. Really exciting to hear our students talk about their experience in Warren Central High School. We are challenged to do better by them, and I'm excited to get that work going. I want to thank the high school team and the Career Center today. We had a junior and senior career fair where all of our juniors and seniors experienced this event. I've seen pictures and talked with staff, and from what I hear, it was an amazing event. We will do the same thing for our sophomores and freshmen in February. And last but not least, the Gransons are not here tonight, but yesterday, we had our kickoff with the KG's kids. I want to thank Kevin Humphrey for being able to participate. I know that was kind of last minute, board, and I apologize for that. But we have a short video that I want to show tonight to end my report. And thank you, Lamar. Thank you, Logan, for putting this together.
We're a literacy-based foundation, and we provide books and literacy resources for kids in underserved communities mostly. Because Colin grew up an avid reader, and we attribute most of his success to being a reader. We like to think that this is a better way out for these kids, a better way to success, okay, than even aspirations to be a professional athlete, which that's possible and it could happen, but we feel like the chances are a whole lot better, okay, when they pick up a book.
Well, in Warren Township, because, I mean, they said yes. I mean, my dad was telling me this story about, like, he had a whole presentation. He had a whole packet printed out. They didn't even open the bag, and Tim literally was like, "David, I'm gonna stop you right here. I don't even need to open this." Yes.
The future is bright. You know, they're gonna work with all nine of our elementary schools and Warren Online Academy to bring literacy into our classrooms, to bring more books into our kids' hands, create events like tonight to get our kids, families, and community excited about reading.
We heard what we were trying to do, heard what our mission statement was. We want to get kids reading, and Warren Township really recognizes how important it is to get kids into reading at an early age, and we are so excited to be working with them. And I know just from the way my mom and dad have been talking, the way our corporate sponsors have been talking, I mean, this thing just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So, I'm really, I'm really excited for the future roles.
So, that all happened yesterday. I want to also thank LaShawna, who's our president of our Warren Arts and Education Foundation. They donated another book vending machine to Brookview. So, they unveiled that last night. That was a surprise to them. We had high school students playing music. We had our football team there, helping our third grade readers out. It was just a beautiful day and great things to come.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. That was a very powerful presentation. I really appreciate you showing us that. A lot of activity happening there. Next on our item on the agenda is our school showcase. We're having Lakeside Elementary School. Principal Janie Smith.
Yay, Janie!
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, technology is awesome. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Hanson, President Dorsey, and school board for allowing us to present tonight. You already got, from the beginning, the best we have, and that is our beautiful students every single day. We have a population of 550 students that we get to love on and cherish every single day, and so, we are proud of them, and if I could have them all here, we would. So, just a quick video to show a little glimpse of our presentation tonight is we want to showcase Lakeside, but we also want to thank our village that helps support us and thank our supporters. Hi, everyone. I'm standing in our wonderful Lakeside garden, and I have a very special thank you that I'd like to shout out to Altroza International. Without all of their support, we would not have this beautiful learning garden, and we also wouldn't have all the opportunities that we've had in our classrooms this year. So, Altroza International, our gardening angels, thank you so much. We love you.
Ground cherries are like these jaggedy leaves, and potatoes are a different leaf. We want to harvest potatoes. We don't want to harvest any plants that look like ground cherries. And they're mixed in on potatoes, like this in the ground, right? You guys grew, there were leaves and there were roots, right? And we put five. We put three along the outside curve and two in the middle. And then, those put out roots, and they should have put out potatoes, not... They didn't burrow way down in the ground, but where they came up at the top, so right along the surface of the dirt, there should be potatoes if we haven't. So, that's what we're looking for. So, I need five people. All right, go.
Potatoes!
Come over and look at our hall.
Can I have gloves or something?
There you go.
I tried my own poster. You want this one?
Have a taste of Lakeside and have a great day!
Thank you, babe!
I'll protect them.
Thank you!
Have a taste of Lakeside and have a great weekend.
I would like to thank Angelic Senior Care for all the love and support that they show our Lakeside students. By their generosity, it builds our students' confidence and gives them a little extra love.
I would like to thank the Lakeside PTA for all of the support that they provide to both our students and our staff throughout the entire school year through all of their fundraising efforts, as well as the various nights that they hold and assist us with.
Thank you to J-Scott Learning and Development After School Tutoring Program for helping us provide the best education for our students. They are in total alignment with Lakeside with brain-based literacy and culturally relevant teaching materials, and most importantly, our students are engaged and enjoying the after-school tutoring process.
A, you're just gonna do the uppercase. Alphabet.
I would like to thank the Warren Arts and Education Foundation for continuously supporting not only Lakeside students, but all of students in Warren Township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you!
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you!
Thank you.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Grammarly's Top 3 Tips on Starting an Essay.
Let's say you're struggling to put pen to paper.
Okay. With, beginning with our goals in mind as we bring in our community supporters, our staff. For NWEA, for the, we will increase our achievement and our growth percentile by 10%. Writing by 20% for iLearn. For iRead3, our iRead3 pass rate for all students will be 95% or an increase of 10% from the previous year. And then, attendance will continue to increase, and our goal is 97% this school year. So, as we continue to work towards our goals, that is always in the forefront, especially when we're bringing in our supporters. So, we're thinking of ways that we can reach our goals with the support of our community. Also, with the support of our community, we are continuing on our jog journey. So, we're also thinking of how our community partners can help us bring relevant experiences to our students. So, as we break down jogs, I'm gonna have my third graders from our ECO Challenge come on up. You got a chance to meet them. Come on up, come stand in the front, Q people. And our second grade gardeners, come on up. So, as I go through our journey of a graduate, the students are a representation of that full circle. Our third graders that you saw do their ECO Challenge presentation today began that challenge last year as second graders. And we talk about communication, resilience, citizenship, content knowledge, collaboration, and critical thinking. It began in their second grade classroom as first just exploring the garden, learning about the garden, becoming hands-on with the garden, and then, having those conversations about how can this garden not just be for Lakeside, but how can it be for the community? What would be the purpose of it being for the community? Which, when they got started their research about what is a food desert, and then, that collaboration and communication got our students to the ECO Challenge where they received first place at the end of last school year. And so, they showed you all of an example of what jog looks like at the elementary level. So, I want to thank you. So, some quick examples. When we talk about communication, participating in dialogue with teachers and peers, demonstrating multiple methods of communication via video, comments, emails, oral presentations, building relationships with our community and our awareness of the impact that we have, not just at Lakeside, but how we impact the world. Participating in advocacy, writing, research. You saw a piece of that today with our harvesting for Hoosiers. Resilience, navigating environments with flexibility. So, our teachers and our community members help give our students those outside experiences so that way, they can practice what resilience and flexibility looks like in a variety of different spaces through our field trip experiences. Adapting to feedback and critiques, working through learning even when it's difficult, knowing when to take breaks and when to push through. Some ways that we do that here at Lakeside. Second steps, playworks, goal setting, reading challenges, self-motivation, and, like I said, having those new experiences. And we want to motivate our students, but we also want to teach them how to motivate themselves. Citizenship. Some of our students up here are playing dual roles because they are also a part of our second grade kindness crew that does wonderful kind things throughout our building. So, citizenship, participating in a larger community, demonstrating citizenship skills, considering the needs of others through their lens. So, some ways at Lakeside, participating in Jump Rope for Heart, school fundraisers, kindness crew, and nurturing the community garden. Content knowledge, starting with our foundation at the elementary level, literacy and numeracy, participating, growth, participation, growth, and demonstrating the learned core curriculum. Demonstration and understanding through class assignments, various forms of communication. Collaboration, practicing and participating in discussions, working with peers to enhance learning with a variety of educational tools. Seeking to learn through, seeking to learn first through listening. Teamwork, shared facts, ideas, group tasks, completion. And so, we have our ECO Challenge from academics to playing sports. That's our fourth grade basketball team to classroom, small group work, to presentations. So, we're trying to touch every aspect and area of their lives. Critical thinking. You saw that play out today in the jog journey. So, participating in discussion-based learning, participating in assignments and tasks, and demonstrating understanding of content knowledge through investigation, discussion, quizzes, problem solving. So, once again, today was showcasing that and how it could move past just the assignments on paper and how our kids are demonstrating their understanding. All right. So, if you don't mind, we're gonna take one quick break so you guys can shake the board's hand and want to thank my beautiful students again.
I don't know where they... Good job. Good job. Good job. Good job. Well, at least they're getting it down there. While they're shaking hands, I would like to say...
While they're shaking hands, I would like to say it is very awesome. I'm so proud of these young people and I was just so impressed with them having all these goodies. So any of you that didn't get your goodie bag, they said they didn't want to take it back home, so hey, they're back there. Let's show them how much we appreciate them. Take it home and put it in with your food and taste the real stuff. Because we don't know, everything that's in the grocery store may not be homegrown and real. It might be in hot houses or something, but we know this is for real. So take it home with you. And one last thing, I know they say I talk too much, but it's important what she's doing. Because my mother was a great cook and I loved to eat and she would cook all the time. So I was like, hey, I don't have to worry about cooking. But once I left home, I said, oh, I want some greens. Went to the grocery store. I had no clue. I had to look and see an old lady and I said, ma'am, can you show me what turnip greens and mustard greens and collard greens are? And she had to come over and actually show me what they were. I didn't want to tell my mom. I was too embarrassed. So you don't want to wait until they're out of the household to find out what these items are. So I think it's great that they're starting in second grade.
I was calling for tech support. I was like, my presentation went away. And for, we have a numerous amount of support at Lakeside and we appreciate everyone. And in the spirit of November and Thanksgiving and going on this night, I thought it was, we thought it was fitting to thank our wonderful supporters. So beginning with Altrusa, thank you for being a part, a key part of our journey of a graduate. We appreciate all you do to support our students and staff. Sincerely, the Lakeside family. So if I can have my, our fabulous Altrusa ladies to come on up, Ms. Face Nodgrass and Leslie Pratt. I'll call everybody back up. We would like to thank Angelic Senior Care for supporting Lakeside and all that you do for our students. And so Ms. Shanice. I'll bring everybody. You know, the kids don't mind standing up in front of people. We would love to thank J. Scott Learning and Development for supporting our Lakeside students, which has doubled our tutoring capacity after school. And then hopefully in January, we will triple that is, is the goal. So with J. Scott Tutoring, Ms. Suzanne and Larizzo Crowley, Lisa Bugs, and Evelyn Hicks. And Ms. Hicks happens to be James Taylor's aunt. We would like to thank WAIF for supporting Lakeside. And as we said, all of our Warren schools, we appreciate the opportunity to write grants to support the things that we want to do at Lakeside. So we'll make sure that we get, uh, thank you, Ms. LaShawna. You're gonna come down. Mrs. Tripple, thank you very much for representing WAIF. And last but not least, just our largest group of supporters. And that is our PTA, our parents and our staff at Lakeside. And representing our PTA is Mrs. Showalter, our treasurer. And if I could have our fabulous parents please stand and our staff please stand. Thank you so much for all of your support and what we do every day for our students. Okay, so now as everyone could come back up to shake the school board's hand, because they would also like to thank you. And I will lead the way. I would also like to thank the school board and Dr. Hanson, because you are also, we are the Lakeside family, but you are also our supporters and we appreciate what you do for Lakeside and your support every single day. So thank you.
I have to say at our school visit, I got my exercise in. My kindness crew gentleman David, he, he was on the go and I learned speed walking really fast.
Well, I thought that was a great presentation and hey, you know, I look at those kids and all I see is future leaders, future leaders. And I know we're in good hands. Okay, next on the agenda. Make sure she's not in the crowd this time. Okay, she's not there. But our president, uh, student council president is not here right this day. So we're gonna move on to any board correspondence, anything? Okay, um, any green cards?
No.
Okay, no green cards as well. Alrighty, well, next on our agenda is of course our consent agenda. And that includes approval of the minutes, financial report, payroll claims, financial report, claim register, and electronic payments. Financial report, year-to-date summary of fund balances, human resource report, our field trip requests, permission to accept gifts and grants, change orders, and use of school property. We do not have any contract, special events, or conflicts of interest forms.
So moved.
Can I get a second on motion, please? Okay, that's LaShawna. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Are we not voting?
Wait a minute, we can, we can, we can do this, can't we? Okay, let's wait for that to come up. And we'll take the vote as soon as it shows itself. Come up? Okay, okay, we got everyone, yeah? Okay, the vote is taken. It passes. Next item on the agenda. I think I'm passing this over to Dr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Before we start this evening's feature movie presentation, we'd like to pass out some concessions to our audience.
Yeah, we got, we got a little surprise for you.
So everyone can kick back, relax, and enjoy.
Yeah, I think we're gonna.
Yes, we're watching a movie. Movie time.
We're gonna see one today. Thank you.
Movie time. Oh, this is awesome.
That was cute.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. How creative.
There's just so many exciting things here in this, this district, you know?
It's good when you can have popcorn at the movies.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, Warren community, welcome to our, our film. Our construction update for November.
Dorsey, Dr. Hanson. Members of the board and to our proud families here on the far east side of Indianapolis. Welcome to the Thanksgiving edition of Inside Warren. Our goal is to maintain financial stability while investing in efficiencies and environment. It is fall here on the far east side of Indianapolis and it's evidenced by the leaves that you see on the ground. And we're also outside of the building of giving, the Morehead Community Resource Center. It also features Sunny Day and we just had our Fall Festival here. And this has been one wonderful addition to the Warren Township family. But today inside Warren, we're gonna get an update from Hawthorne Elementary School and their proud principal, Mr. Greg Butler. And then also we're gonna do a little Warren Township Cribs edition of the New Warren Central Athletic Hall of Fame. Can't wait to do that. But in the meanwhile, before we go there, we traveled around the district because we're continuing our campaign of sharing joy. But this November, we ask our students, our staff, and our supporters to share their joy by giving thanks. So if you're ready to go inside Warren, strap on your hard hat and let's get to it.
I'm thankful for my classmates, I'm thankful for my teacher, I'm thankful for my colleagues, thankful for my family, I'm thankful for everybody.
I am thankful for my students, I am thankful for all of my coworkers, and I am thankful for the people that I have in my life right now.
I'm thankful for my, for my teacher because she helped me get honor roll last year by teaching me. And I'm thankful for my mom because she has encouraged me to read and do my homework.
I'm thankful for so many things in my life, but what I'm thankful most for at school is Mr. Lewis for giving me the room to be creative and do the best teaching I know how to do.
I'm thankful for my family and my students.
One of the things I am thankful for in a building like this of leading over 350 three-to-five-year-olds is I get to do things like this and embrace my inner child.
I'm thankful for my family, I'm thankful for my friends, I'm thankful for being able to work in a place that I can give every day and do what I do. I love being here.
I am thankful for family and friends and I am thankful for good health and for healing.
This year I am thankful for my new home that I had built this year. It is my place of peace and I am very grateful for it.
Let me tell you what I'm thankful for. I'm thankful when my former students come back. They join us in education, we work side by side. I'm also thankful for my daughter who got into education at Warren Central. My niece that got into education at Warren Central. My son that got in, into education, he's at a charter school, but we love him anyway. I'm just very thankful for the kids that come up that we taught and they come back and they join us. Thankful for a lot.
Thankful for Warren Township. I'm thankful for everything they do for me.
I'm very thankful for my family, for work.
Thankful for a few things. I'm thankful for Creston. I'm thankful for the staff that's here. Thankful for, you know, some new projects that we've got going in Creston.
I'm thankful for, for all the opportunity that I was given in the district.
I am thankful for the staff that I get to work with daily and I am also grateful that they trust me to be their leader. And I'm also very thankful for our families and our students here at East Ridge.
I am thankful for my East Ridge family and my amazing students.
Greetings, Hawk Nation and Warren Township. My name is Greg Butler, proud principal, Hawthorne Elementary. We're here today just to give you an update on some of the awesome things going on in construction here at 8301 East Rawls Avenue. Hey folks, this is the conference room. It's still under construction, but it's looking pretty good. It's about 80% done. Now we no longer have to meet in my office, so we have this beautiful space. Still trying to figure out a couple of things. Tech is gonna be awesome. They're gonna mount a TV, put some more wireless access points in here. So I am truly excited to have an actual conference room space this year with staff, students, and of course, families. We are now in our updated library. Now yes, as you look at it, it is still books being unpacked. Our team has done a fabulous job of taking thousands of books and putting them back on their shelves. And yes, we are housing some classroom supplies and furniture in here until we're ready to go. But if you look at the floors, you look at the walls. But if you look at the floors, you look at the walls, you look at some of the new desk furniture, we really are excited about all the great things that are gonna happen in the library here because we know that readers are leaders. We are super excited about the great space that they've adjusted in our kindergarten classroom. And as a matter of fact, we have one of our fabulous first-year teachers, Ms. Hoskins, who is already hard at work and the day just got started.
Come on in. We don't need to practice that on our own. Let's move on. Remember, when we see the uh, oh, the uh sound part, can I turn around? When we see the uh sound part, what do you think? Someone thinking? And you say, uh. Very good. How do we spell the uh sound? Would uh replace you?
You're now down the lower hallway where we're gonna have actually a new collaboration room for teachers, which is gonna be awesome. As you can see, the guys are always working hard, taking care of us. And who would know that all this was going on 20 feet away from a classroom that's fully operational? I'm so excited for our fourth graders. While they are leaving us soon, they still get to take part in seeing some of the new things that they have in classrooms, the furniture, the flooring, the bright colors, the paint. We love these new LED lights, which makes the place a lot brighter. And I think the team has done a fantastic job of really taking care of just the small pieces that are gonna make this a great learning environment, not just now, but for years and years to come. All right, we are so excited about all the new things. For about six months, we all played on a grass field, something like this. The kids did a fabulous job, but they were so excited. And day after day, they waited. And finally, we came to what is now our new playground. And the kids absolutely love all the things they can do on it. It's amazing when you see kids literally showing that joy that is our focus for this year. As we stand out here, everything you see is brand new, absolutely brand new. State-of-the-art concrete and everything we need to make this happen. We are so excited. What you're standing on right now, what used to be the playground and just a large field, is now an opportunity for us to have an excellent pathway for our buses and even safer pathway for our students to get to those buses. Also, when we have events in our brand-new gym, which we will show you in a minute, we will also have great parking out here for our families to come. And while we're talking about the gym, through these doors right here, we will show you something brand new. It's hard to believe that this space we're standing in right now, six months ago, didn't even exist. And every day we come through, we see it grow and grow, just like we like to see our students grow. And as we get closer and closer to it, we are so proud to have this amazing new space. We can only imagine all the things students, staff, and the community can do in here and how many great events are gonna take place. And we're gonna make memories in such a great and awesome space. Thanks, everybody, for visiting. Really enjoyed taking you on our tour while we're still in progress. Know this, the next time you come, we're gonna have a full roof over our head and we'll be able to brag even more on all the great things happening right here in Hawk Nation. You have a great day.
Welcome to the pride of the east side, the home of the Warriors. And today, for the first time, you get a chance to take a look at the finished, brand-new Warren Central Athletic Hall of Fame. It's been a long time coming. We're gonna give you a little history lesson, but you know what? Let's take a look at it right now. Okay, what would a Hall of Fame be without championships? And here at Warren Central High School and the athletic department, we have a lot of championships to speak on. And the series of display cases illustrates just that tradition, that championship tradition. And starting here with the football display, as you can see, it has our most recent state championship from the 2018 season. But what I really appreciate about this design and our partners from Section 127 Sports Graphics, working with them as we put this project together, we wanted to make sure that we included some of those athletes and coaches that contributed to the success. So if you look at some of the pictures here, you have Jeff George Jr., who led us to the 2013 state championship. You see his brother, Jaden, who led us to the 2018 state championship. David Bell, everybody knows who David Bell is, All-American student athlete here at Warren Central, as well as a NFL player with the Cleveland Browns this season. Darren Evans, you see Katrelle Moss, one of our captains from 2013 team. Ramir Elliott, James Manuel, Maurice McGee. Maurice McGee caught the game winning, oh, I should say game tying champion, or touchdown versus Carmel in the 2009 state finals, which forced that game to go overtime, we ended up winning that game in overtime. So, and then most notably, Coach Larry Willen, who was a part of every Warren Central football and boys' track state championships. I wanna say that's 12 total. And we lost Coach Willen in 2019, but as you can see, this Hall of Fame ensures that his legacy lives forever. And then, our special season from 2018, our first basketball state championship in the history, now the 100-year history of Warren Central High School, was won in the same year by our boys and girls. And again, looking at some of those images, you see Dean Tate, you see Joe Rush, again, David Bell, Jacoby, Jesse, just a great group of guys. Antoine Cushionberry, you see our girls. That's Shay Beeler, who was runner-up for Miss Basketball her senior year. Big Sidney Dodd, you see Mairell Bell, who was our first Mental Attitude Award winner. And then again, you see Coach Mitchell, you see Kajia Tally, who's a Marion County Athlete of the Year. You see our cross-country, we won back-to-back state championships in '05 and '06. And we were led by this young man right here, Deshaun Turner, who is now a Division One cross-country and track coach at Miami of Ohio. And then you just see their legacy there. We have two state championships in wrestling. You can see our last one was in 2016. Coach Chante led us to the championship. That was a phenomenal team, that, that, that team had a lot of character. And then our softball, we have one softball state championship from 1985. We just celebrated their, their reunion a few years back. Again, you see that team, as well as gymnastics. And gymnastics is, is no longer offered by the IHSA for boys. However, when we had a team back in the, the late 70s and 80s, we were one of the top programs in the country. Outside of football and basketball, Warren Central is known most for its track. And as you can see here, these two displays on the outside, girls' track first and foremost represents the five state championships that we've won. I wanna say we have seven or eight runner, state runner-ups as well. So we have one of the most successful girls' track programs. You see Kalen Jackson, these are all two-time state champions. Promise Hoosier, Kalen Jackson, Lorian Price, who's in charge of academic support for athletes at Indiana University. You see Logan Hayes, as well as Candace McGroan, who was real close to making the Olympic team. And then here on the boys' side here, again, we've won four state championships, all under Coach Dennis McNulty. State Hall of Famer, as well as national Hall of Famer as far as track. And then our boys' golf state championship in 1983. And just in case you forgot, yeah, we play some golf here on the east side. When you think of Warren, you think of that iconic W. That W is something that is not only known here on the far east side, but it's known throughout the country. They understand that, that, that represents the Warren Central Warriors. But this is one of my favorite displays because this gives a history of the different logos that we've used. As you can see, as I mentioned before, the orange and gold was part of our original school colors. So you can see the, the first W, all right, the branded W. And then you see the orange branded WC. And then, again, at one point in our history, we used the Indian head. We no longer use that or distribute that, but it's just here for historical reasons. And then if you go up to the top, you see the WC, which became more popular. Often times you hear Warren Central referred to as Dub C, that comes from that logo. And that was really popular in the, the 90s and the early 2000s, okay? But again, our iconic W is pretty much where we're at now. And just again, another history lesson, at one point, we were asked by the University of Wisconsin to make sure that our W was, let's just say, it didn't resemble the iconic Wisconsin W. So back in the mid-2000s, we made those adjustments and here it is right here, the finished product. And when you see that W, it invokes fear. This is something, again, that is very important to our history, but it's, in essence, a running tab of all of our accomplishments. As you can see, 28 IHSA state championships, 92 individual state championships in county, 16 runner-ups, 10 academic All-Americans, 50 conference championships, 29 first-team All-Americans, and 123 Marion County championships. Woo! That history is something special and I'm glad we have a home to showcase this for the next generations of Warriors to come. Last but not least, again, what differentiates the Warren Central Athletic Hall of Fame compared to any other high school Hall of Fame is this special display right here. It's called the Ring of Honor. And this Ring of Honor is dedicated to the tremendous and impactful adults that we've had working with our student athletes, going all the way back through the beginning of Warren Central High School in 1924. You see our very first athletic director for almost 20 years, Walter Mowry. He was the athletic director, cross-country basketball, track and field coach from 1924 to 1953. And then all the way to Vaughn Wood and Ralph Clevenger, our first female inductee, Rosalyn White. She was the Girl Athletic Association sponsor for volleyball from 1955 to 1972. The great Dave Shaw, longtime football and track coach. Jack Gary, Al Morgan led us to our first wrestling state championship in 1980. The great Dick Conway, longtime cross-country coach. Don Foreman, baseball coach for us. And also Jerry Stauffer, who's near and dear to our heart, led us to back-to-back state championships in 845. Also, longtime Warren Central Athletic Director. The iconic Larry Willen, who we talked about earlier, his, his legend lives forever. Dave Stroud led us to our first softball state championship in 1984. And Sue Parrish, state runner-up in girls' basketball in, in 1984. To some of the, the, the coaches I had opportunities to work with, Dean Carbone, Dennis McNulty, Joe Brooks, who led us to back-to-back state championships in cross-country. Gary Roberts, who is still coaching Warren Central today, but Gary started both our boys' and girls' soccer program, but then also started our girls' lacrosse program. So definitely a bricklayer, as well as the great Kevin Wright, who started the modern-day Warren Central football dynasty, led us to three consecutive state championships, as well as the dynamic duo of James Taylor and Hope Sanders. Between the two of them, they led us to three consecutive IHSA girls' state championships and really helped put Warren Central on the map. As well as the great Danny Williams, as well as the great Con Keller. So again, this, this Ring of Honor, we're gonna continue to add to. And our plan is to add a second display specifically for our great student athletes as we expand this. So this is the Warren Central Athletic Hall of Fame, first of its kind. And we're gonna continue to add to our history because we have a lot of things that we wanna put here. But in the meanwhile, you don't have to go home, but you gotta get out of here.
Question. On that sign, that thing that has all of the numbers of state championships and Marion County championships and state runners-up and stuff like that, are those numbers able to peel away so we can put higher ones up as we move up?
Absolutely, we already are in need of an update just from, I think we won a unified conference championship this fall.
All right.
So yeah, we, and I'm not sure if our state runner-up from girls' track is on there. So we're working with Section 127 as we speak to, to, to make sure we can do that in a timely manner because I think we all know that parents want those records.
Yeah.
Updated now, while their kids are here.
That was a great exhibition. That was really good.
Well, hopefully the popcorn was better, so.
That was awesome, I'm glad I came to the movies.
Shout out to the guy behind the camera, too.
Absolutely.
Logan.
Logan.
Yeah, great job.
The guy behind the camera, as well as Lamarra, I have to give her credit. She, she came up with the family, I'm sorry, the Inside Warren, Warren Matters theme, the intro. So gotta give Lamarra credit for that. So, great team, thank you.
Yes, very good job. Okay, next on the item, I understand we've got a yellow card.
We do. Mr. Dave Davis, first of all, thank you for your patience. And if you wanna come up to the mic over there, feel free. As a reminder, comments are limited to three minutes. Okay.
Well, first of all, I wanna say thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to say this. I've been trying to get to the meeting for a couple of years now. Most of my children have graduated, all except for the last two. One come out this year, one come out next year. My concern was, I've got one student that, one child that graduated and he basically can't count. And that, that threw me for a loop, you know, because I was trying to figure out how he managed to get out of high school without being able to add and subtract, you know? So, you know, that, that, that sort of threw me for a loop, you know? So that's what I really wanted to, you know, voice. And also, the virtual school, when the students go to virtual school, are they not allowed to participate in the school athletics? Because I, I've, I've got one student that, got one kid that's going virtual and he didn't finish up all his courses and everything and he found out the other day that unless he enrolls into one class at Warren Central, he won't be able to participate in swimming. And in order for him to participate in swimming, he's gotta go, you know, get a, at least a semester in. And I would, I was kinda confused about that because I was under the understanding that the virtual class is, you know, the same as going to regular school. And if he's got his grades and everything up, then I was thinking that he would be able to participate. So he has been, excuse me, he has been going to practice and everything, but he came in kinda sad-faced the other day because he found out that he won't be able to participate in any of the competitions. So if, you know, if somebody could enlighten me on that a little bit or sort of get back with me or whatever.
Well, sir, what we'll do is, we will take your question and, and, and provide you with a response.
All right, I appreciate that. And you guys have a great day and great movie, too.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your patience.
I'm sure we'd like to have this up the rest of the night. I will. Dr. Hanson, President Dorsey, members of the board, I have before you for a consideration of approval of a compensation increase for our hourly support staff and salary non-certified employees. It's structured very similar to last year, but to be specific, it is a 4% raise across the board, which is a very healthy raise, I am happy to say. And then in addition, just like last year, there will be a one-time employer contribution of $650 to the Health Savings Account for all support staff. For support staff who do not have a Health Savings Account, they would get that equivalent amount, less taxes and so on, as a one-time. amount, less taxes and so on, as a one-time stipend. And the other piece, of course, is our long-running tradition of a loyalty stipend of $350 to all support staff, full-time support staff who have 20 or more years of loyal service, which we typically recognize at the December board meeting. So what that means is like a starting IA instructional assistant would go from like 1506 to 1566, or a starting bus driver from 2417 to 2514 and so on, so.
So moved. So moved.
I made the motion. I made the motion. I made the motion.
She did. She tried to make it twice before.
Then I'll second it. Then I'll second it.
Are we voting on this separately, I guess?
The motion carries.
Okay. Does that include the admin as well? I didn't cover that one, but okay. That's next. Also for your consideration and approval is a compensation increase proposal for administrators. Very similar to last year as well in terms of its structure, but it is a proposed increase of $3,300 of the base salary for all administrators employed in the district. That is the same raise that teachers received. That was passed by the board recently. In addition, will also be, again, a one-time contribution based on, to the Health Savings Account for administrators of $650 to those administrators with zero to four years of warrant experience, or $1,200 to administrators with five or more years of warrant experience. For those administrators that don't have an HSA, they would get the equivalent amount as a stipend, less the taxes and retirement, so.
So moved.
Do you second? You second it? We got Julie make the motion and Gloria second. Go put a vote. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, the next item, agenda items are discussion items, and first, next up, or next up, yes, is Marcus Clayton, safety presentation.
Ryan, what was the trick you did here on this? Oh, it's already up there. Okay, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, and to our Warren families, this evening for discussion, I would like to reintroduce the opportunity we have to enhance our safety procedures and protocols through the consideration for the purchase of concealed weapons detection units through Evolve. But first, we start with our board goal as it relates to invest in physical and psychological safety, security and the well-being of all students and staff. Then our strategic plan focused area, invest in relationships with families and community, and invest in efficiencies and environment. If I could just hang on the key word, environment. We know that safety is essential to the teaching and learning environment. That's something that we all agree on, that we are committed to, not just by our words, but also by the investments that we continue to make throughout our district around safety to ensure that our parents, when they drop their kids off or they put them on the bus stop, that they are secure in knowing that their students will be entering a safe environment. Our students spend about seven to 10 hours with us daily, Monday through Friday. And again, we understand it's our obligatory obligation to provide a safe teaching and learning environment where our students can thrive. I just want to share a couple quick national and local stats with you as it relates to safety. From 2000 to 2021 nationally, there were 347 violent crime, or I should say violent critical incidents and active shooter, high-threat incidents recorded. Again, that's nationally. Here locally, if you look at the ZIP codes that we serve, 46203, 46219, 46226, 46229, 46235, 46239. Overall, according to crimegrade.org, specifically 85% of ZIP codes across the country are considered more safe than our ZIP codes here on the far east side, 85%. And let's focus just on one of those ZIP codes, 46219. 46219 is where our administration building resides. It's where, it's the location of tonight's board meeting. And in this ZIP code specifically, a crime occurs every seven hours and 57 minutes. And the chances of being a victim of a violent crime may be as high as 1 in 27 in our northern neighborhoods, and in our, the eastern part of our district, 1 in 46. That trend, as well as parent feedback that we received last school year through our two community safety forums, really has motivated and mobilized us to take immediate action around opportunities to enhance our school's safety. And it's important to note just, these are some of the challenges and some of the concerns that our students bring to our schools, that our parents, just through the experiences they have, that they deal with as well. One of these new technologies is the Evolve Concealed Weapon Detection System. This advanced system utilizes millimeter wave technology and machine learning algorithms to detect the material and shape of items hidden in clothing and backpacks. Board, you had the opportunity to become familiar with these units a few months ago. And as you learn, it can distinguish between innocent objects like a keychain and potential threats like a knife or a firearm. And it's designed to detect knives and larger-than-two-inches explosive devices, as well as firearms. The system is touchless, highly efficient and mobile, making it suitable for both indoor and outdoor settings. Importantly, no data is stored on the Warren Township servers, preserving the privacy of our students. So I'm going to go and talk about, again, just a reminder of what this technology could look like in our schools. So as you can see here, this is an example, they have one of two units that they sell. The first one is a, considered a single-lane unit, which kind of speaks for itself. One lane where students will walk through pretty much uninterrupted, and we'll kind of go through what that looks like. The example you have here, this is called a dual lane, where you have two lanes that students, or if we're using this for extracurricular activities, for games, band competitions, things of that nature, this gives us an opportunity to move people through much quicker. What we're looking at right now is providing a dual-lane unit at our busiest doors, our busiest entryways, which if we look at where does traffic come in, in terms of our student traffic, about 80% of our students at the high school, they ride the bus. And because of that, specifically on the 16th Street side of the high school, we're specifically looking at the three doors that we have accessible now. That's door 40, 41, and 36. So at those three locations, that's where we would have the dual-lane units set up because we know we have to get a lot of kids in really, really quick. Again, you see the tables, the stanchions. That way, we can use those for the Chromebooks or anything that we know ahead of time that may, that may cause some type of disruption to the system. So we're able to check those, and then I'm going to go through exactly how that will be deployed as well. You see the monitors, the tablets that will be used. So if we have a dual-lane setup, and I'll go through that again, you'll have a tablet for each lane, therefore we'll have to provide the staffing for that. Okay, real quick, I'm going to go through these five areas. The acquisition, community engagement, deployment, training and staffing. These five areas are going to be important as we potentially roll this out and make sure that not only we're providing the proper training for our staff members involved in this daily process, but also educate our community as well so they can understand exactly the enhancements that we are making to better protect their children. Again, I mentioned the seven units that we have for proposal here for discussion. Again, we would like three dual lanes specifically to use at those entries where our students arrive off the bus, and then four single lanes that will be deployed at our student drop-off at door 21. Also, we would use a unit at door one, as well as door 70. The timeline, if we receive approval, then we're looking at six to eight weeks for delivery from the time they receive the PO. And then also, ERS Evolve personnel will deliver, set up, and they will be present throughout the rollout of the Concealed Weapons Detection Unit. Again, we talked about opportunities to engage our communities. We spent a lot of time talking about, you know, opportunities to engage with, like as we did last year with the safety form. As, you know, I've had an opportunity to talk to some of you, as well as Dr. Hanson, we think that the path forward is to make these school-specific safety forms, because as we know, parents are most concerned, what's going on at my child's school? What safety measures are you taking at my child's school? How does this affect my child? So whenever we have safety enhancements or new safety initiatives, we want to make sure that we're engaging on the building level. Deployment, upon arrival, the units will be shipped directly to Warren Central High School. Our Warren Police Department, myself, the high school principal will determine training opportunities for SROs, SSOs, and WCHS staff members. Again, I mentioned those doors, 36, 40, 41, 21, 1, and 70. Units will be deployed and designated, to the designated doors, set up and tested. We'll establish dates for onsite support from ERS Evolve. And we are looking at what we are going to refer to as a soft launch. And that soft launch means we're going to start off with two doors, specifically on the 16th Street side, 40 and 41, because we want to make sure that we can execute this with the personnel that we have designated for it. And I'll come back to that here shortly. Training-wise, again, ERS Evolve will provide the training. Warren Police will play a role in that as well. We'll conduct training sessions. We're going to start with SROs and SSOs and our technology team, because obviously they will have to provide support. Our high school administration team, our staff members that will be involved, and that will also consist of best practices that we're able to learn throughout the process, as well as some of the other school districts that we're in contact with. The way our training will be set up, it will consist of four stations for 20 minutes. The first focus will be on the unit technical orientation, where we were focused on the technical aspects of operating the tablet. After they complete that 20-minute session, they'll rotate, and they will go to a simulation where they were focused on the lobby, the ingress, the entrance. And they, again, they will operate the laptops or the tablets, simulated unauthorized objects, special situations, wheelchair, if we have a student coming in a wheelchair, but we're going to practice those scenarios, go through every scenario that we can imagine, so the individuals we have assigned, designated to operate at each lane, that they feel comfortable with the different situations that may arise. Also, Chief Canaan, as well as our Warren Police Team, will focus on the proper Warren Police Department search procedures, and as well as just some of the foundational things around the Evolve. And then finally, the school-level operational considerations, which I will lead, and that will focus on topics such as after-school activity use, extracurricular activities, staff training, and then other miscellaneous items. Again, we are committed to finding the best practices possible. These are just four school districts that I've been in contact with since May that have all deployed the Evolve system, everywhere from South Carolina, Hammond, as well as Alabama, Maryland, and then also here locally, Perry Township, they just purchased several Evolve units that they are just now starting their rollout. We've been in contact with them as well, and we plan on setting up some time to see how they execute it. I'm very confident around our ability to execute this, because this has been part of our culture in terms of concealed weapon-type searches for a long time, specifically at the high school, whether it's through our door-one main entry throughout the school day, or at our extracurricular activities. Our staffing, I talked about the soft launch. This is what this potentially will look like, and I just want to reiterate that Chief Canaan is going to play a major role, Warren Police is going to play a major role in this process. He will be present throughout. And this is what week one will potentially look like. Again, we're looking at door 40 and 41. We want to start at those two heavy traffic lanes, or I should say doors. The personnel that we would need for that rollout for week one to man those two doors, we would need four of our student safety officers, our SSOs. We would need two SROs. We would have one at each door, one at door 40, one at door 41. We'd have two SSOs, because again, those are dual lanes. So we would have two SSOs, one at door, two at door 40, and also two at door 41. And we would need two staff members from the high school, one at door 40 and the other one at door 41. When we get to week two, and again, these are tentative, because if we haven't perfected door 40 and 41, then we're going to continue to do that until we're comfortable with making that transition to the next step. The next step is to include door 36. That is the third entry point for our buses. At that point, we're going to continue to have two SROs, but what we're going to do is we're going to have an SRO cover doors 40 and 41, because they're relatively close to each other. Our second SRO will cover door 36, the new entry point that we're introducing to this. We're going to increase our SSOs to six. We're going to go from four to six, and then we're going to increase our staff members by one. We'll have, again, two SSOs at 40, two at 41, two at 36, and one staff member to support. And again, 40, 41, and 36 will have the three dual lane. They'll have the dual lane. Week three, or whenever we're ready to make that transition, again, we will now include door 21, which is the drop-off, the parent drop-off. Traffic is lighter at 21 compared to 40, 41, and 36, so we will only need a single-lane unit at door 21. So at door 21, we will support that with an SRO. And by that time, after two or more weeks, we feel like we should be able to cover the doors on the 16th Street side with one SRO, just going back and forth. If they need assistance, they'll be able to go to one of those three doors. We'll bring our second SRO to door 21 to assist. And because it's a single lane, we'll only need one SSO on the tablet and one staff member in the event that we would need to stop someone and assist with some type of search of some sort. And then week four. And then week four, when we get to that final phase, we're going to bring in the door one and door 70. And again, because traffic there is consistent but not as heavy as we have on the 16th Street side, we're going to use single lanes at door one and door 70. We will have a SRO, a third SRO, that we will bring in to assist with door one and door 70. And because again, they're a single lane, we will need one SSO at one, door one, we'll need one SSO at door 70, and then we'll need staff members at door one and 70 to support. So, once we get to the point where we are fully executing this at all of our entry points, and again, part of the, the challenge was, we went, you have a high school that has 72 doors. And at one point, just about all those doors were accessible in the morning. So, what the, the high school did a great job of just in preparation for this is, they went down to six entry points. That helped us tremendously, and the kids, they adjusted to it, and our entry and exit is, is pretty smooth based on that. So, we'll need nine SSOs, three SROs, and six staff members. If we find out along the way that we don't need that much, then we'll make adjustments accordingly. But that is our initial soft launch, launch plan on that. I know it's a lot, but, any questions?
Yeah. Uh, you call it a soft launch. Is there a hard launch?
I would, I would, President Dorsey, I would, does, I would classify a hard launch would be starting with all six entry points. I think that with this being new and some, just some unknowns behind it, we want to make sure that everybody involved is comfortable with the technology, the execution of it. And as we are able to execute that at a highly effective level, then we can include more doors. I think it could potentially be overwhelming. We know that this is going to be a change. The way the technology is set up, it's, you know, it's, it will allow us to get a lot of students through in a short period of time, but at the same time, we have to be prepared for any type of challenges that may come. So mastering two doors initially, we believe would allow us to gradually increase that over time.
Okay, so you've got four stations, training. You've got four stations and you've got 20-minute sessions. Okay. I'm talking out loud, I'm, I'm trying to visualize what that looks like, and how much time that's taken and that sort of thing. Let me ask you this. How many SROs and SSOs are, do you, do you have on, on the force? And I'll tell you why I'm asking that. You know, give you time to think about that number. Because I'm, I'm looking at, the bus is coming in the morning. We've got guys poised to check these, to, to man these stations. You've got dual session, dual launches, dual, and, and single distractions. My question is, where's the rest of the company, where's, where are the rest of the members of, 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 of the, of the police force? And, and I'll tell you why I'm asking that. Because if something goes off, while we're trying to check kids in at door 41 and 40, and something goes off somewhere, do we have enough cops to cover all of that? Watching people getting in, or checking people coming in, and, and somebody's running down the street with a gun on campus? It just came to mind, are we adequately staffed to be able to handle a situation like that?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think that with us starting with the high school, and with the high school being part of the first tier, it gives us some flexibility to bring more SROs in. And I think to answer the previous question that you asked as it relates, relates to staffing, we're in the process right now of hiring another SRO. By the time we, you know, if we have the opportunity to, to make this purchase, we will be fully staffed by that time. We're, we're getting pretty close on another SRO. We have some other things that we're going to do, restructure-wise. But part of this, I would say this transition, President Dorsey quite honestly is, because traffic is, is obviously a challenge as well, right? You have to have, you know, preferably cars with lights, right? Police cars assisting with, with traffic. One, the, some of the flexibility that we're going to use is, we're going to have SSOs that go in later at our middle schools, that will have the opportunities to come over and assist as well with this arrival process. This should be complete, because again, you know, students get off the bus, I want to say about 7:05, is that about right, Ryan? Is it about 7:05? Which gives them about 10 minutes to get to class. We should have everybody in, in terms of what this looks like, because class starts at 7:15. By 7:20, then those SROs and SSOs will get deployed to, to their buildings once we get everyone in. But right now, we, if we use our SSOs that we have at the building, because right now, I believe we have five at the high school, we'll pull a couple others from the middle school, because they start later, then that will provide us with the number of SSOs that we'll need. And then as I said, we'll, right now, we are looking at bringing at least three SROs in the building to help assist with this process. And it's going to involve some communication in the event that, you know, we have a situation where we have to perform, let's just say, a little bit more deeper search.
Okay. You've got one heck of a shell game challenge here. You know what I mean? And I'm, I'm not going to talk anymore about that. Let me, let me, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm, I want to probably chat with you offline. How much is this thing going to cost us? I mean, we talked about price the last time, and I, I slept since then. Okay? I'm just curious about the cost.
Absolutely. So, for one single lane unit, the, the price tag is $53,137.50. For one dual lane, it is $63,269.38. That's the quote we received here this week.
Okay. Now, one other thing you had here that I just made a note of, and you, you said no data stored on Warren Township's servers. I, I made myself a little note, why, why should I be concerned about that?
You said why?
Why, yeah. Why, why should I be concerned about that? It was important enough for you to put up there, it was probably important, so I, and I don't, I don't, I don't get it.
Um, I think that some of the concerns that parents will, will potentially have, if we're doing a search of some sort, if we're doing a check, it's always a concern around just identity issues, private information issues, and that, that's not a factor at all, as it relates to what we're conducting here. There's nothing being, you know, stored, there's nothing that is pulling in information, private, personal information of students.
So when you, kid walks through the, the thing, and you, you spot guns, that information is not stored on the system anywhere? Or that history is never, is not stored? Is that what you're saying to me?
Yes.
That system is not on, on the system? So parents don't have to worry about their kid being name put on the
Correct.
The news?
Correct.
But do our cops know who these kids are? If that data's not stored, how do we, how, how, how do we hold?
So
Maybe, maybe I'm, I'm just thinking too hard on this.
So if you recall, if a, a student or a spectator fits an event, they go through the unit, and remember the, the red box? If they have something that fits that criteria, a red box will appear. Now, at that time, it will not tell us specifically what it is, but it's going to give us the reason of suspicion to conduct a search in that specific area. Through that search, if, you know, we find something that's, you know, a weapon, or something of that nature, then, you know, we'll handle it accordingly, just like we would in any normal search.
Okay. But the system that we're buying doesn't capture the data, is that what you're saying?
No.
But our police officers are recording and making a blotter and
Administrators as well.
An individual, and, you know, we're, we're tracking kids who have issues like that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm, I'm good.
Do you feel confident that you're going to be able to get 3,000 kids in, in 10 minutes? Basically what we're saying, right? 7:05 to 7:15?
I am, and if we launch this one step at a time, and execute it door by door, I am. I, I believe in our kids, I believe in what we've done now for almost the last 10 years around this. I don't think this is going to be something that's going to be, you know, foreign to our kids, but the challenge is the, the staffing. And if you talk to all of the districts around the country, they've all taken unique approaches in terms of how they do that. But, you know, it goes back to, and I know we're all in agreement, just, we want our schools to be safe, and we want our school, we don't want our kids to ever worry about someone having a weapon in school. I know when my daughter went through the high school, she shared a lot of information with me as it relates to, let's just say, kids that were bringing things into school that they shouldn't. And that assisted, just from a, a school standpoint in terms of making, but obviously she didn't capture everything. She shared that with me, just like students do that every day, because they want a school that doesn't have those type of distractions, they don't want to have those type of fears. And part of our challenge is to, if, is this the, if this is the environment, our kids deserve the best. They deserve to feel safe. They deserve to be in a teaching and learning environment that's disruption-free, and they don't have to worry about some of the things that unfortunately happen in other districts. Then this is just something that we're going to have to, we're going to have to commit to, and we're going to have to make happen on behalf of kids.
I just wanted to say, going back to what Howard said, you know, the machine is great, but like you said, staffing, are we going to have enough officers to deal with that and also be available, you know, for other things that, that's needed early in the morning? And like Julie said, then be able to get all those students in. So manpower is, is really important in order for us to get those students in.
Absolutely. And I think the important thing to understand too is that our officers, they're not necessarily going to be the first line of defense as it relates to searches. Just like now, our school administrators will be a part of that. If it's something that we believe that is, let's just say, requires their intervention, we will make sure they're present before that search takes place. What we're really hoping, and I think that's why the community engagement part is essential to this process, we, we want our students to know we're doing this. We want our parents to know we're doing this, because let's just say if a student makes a bad decision, that they know that this technology is there, that they're not going to bring it to school. We want it to be more of a deterrent than anything else. And that's just part of the, I think the benefit of doing this, is that I think it will be, it will serve as a deterrent.
Board, just a reminder, we're bringing this to you for discussion. So if you have any questions, if you want to meet with Marcus specifically from now until December, please reach out.
Yep, yep. I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Marcus, one, one more thing. Board, we, we have in the presentation that we were going to have a community forum on December 4th. We would like to change that date to align more closely when we will do the soft launch at the high school. Because we do feel this first one, it will be important for us to get in front of families and families to get in front of us for this at the high school. So, we will be having a safety forum to, to present this, but it'll be closer to when we go live. So not December 4th. Take, take that off your calendar. Thank you.
Let me just clean up your board. Okay. Thanks, Mark. Next on our agenda is our Policy 9130, Public Complaints and Concerns. Brian and Russell show.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, this, yeah, this is a somewhat rare tag-team effort with regard to a policy discussion, specifically 9130, addressing public complaints and concerns. I'll briefly cover the first half, and then I'll turn it over to my colleague, Ryan Russell. He'll address the second half, which regarding education program and instructional and school library materials. So the, the first half, the policy overall, just provides a, a means for giving due consideration to public complaints in a fair and impartial manner, and a way to seek the appropriate corrective action. And for complaints regarding Warren staff, whether that's professional support or administrative, it outlines steps from the most informal to the formal in terms of providing, determining whether and to what extent a resolution can be found. Other than that, it also describes how to address matters regarding the superintendent. I forbid. Ryan?
Parts two and three then are really complaints against, or not against, but complaints in regards to instructional materials. And then part three would be complaints or concerns about any specific book or publication that would be housed in our library. To be specific about the instructional materials, those would come in writing directly to the associate superintendent. The library materials would come in writing directly to that building's principal. We have the option, we state we may call upon a review committee for that at the end of the day, specific to library books. You know, we're really looking for obscene or harmful material to minors, as really the only thing that would require us to remove. And then it outlines appeal procedures and everything where you guys, as a board, would get involved in such cases. So, I think I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but with that, that's where
Yeah. Thank you.
One more.
You're going to do calendars?
I'm going to do calendars.
Okay.
Okay. Board, tonight in front of you, you have what you've already approved in the 2425 school calendar, academic calendar, and then you have the proposed school year 2526 calendar. The 2526 calendar is really a, I won't call it a carbon copy, I'll call it a copy with the dates adjusted to 2526. And I'll just remind you of some key highlights, especially because we have a fairly significant change for next year that you guys approved last year. So, new to next year, the 2425 school year, which is always, which is also reflected in the 2526 calendar, is the first day of school will be for K9 students only. Remember, as a part of our way to effectively transition students to high school, the first day of school at Warren Central will be for freshmen only. And for students in grades 10 through 12, we'll make that up through a specific e-learning day later on in February on both years. And I know Ms. Taylor and team are really excited about, and we're actually already deep in the planning of what that day for freshmen looked like, looks like to provide just a great overall experience for that. You may recall, Dr. Hanson in a Wednesday call a couple of weeks ago, put out some calendar, or at least made the community aware of where the community could put any feedback about the calendars that we have in place or any questions. That's been active. No real, or I will say no, concerns that have bubbled up that have been repetitive in nature. Of course, we have, we had one comment, I think we had a total of 20 comments at, at last looked. We had the one comment about starting school after Labor Day or, or something minor tweaks. Overall, the desire was for a consistent schedule, which means more of the carbon copies, so we can stay consistent, so people can better anticipate what that looks like. Happy to answer any questions. I will keep those feedback, the Google Form calendar feedback open the rest of the month until the until the December meeting. If something pops up in between there, as far as a significant concern or something that comes up, that comes up that makes us think that we may need to make a change, we'll communicate that, but I'll be bringing this back in December, asking for you to approve for the 2526 school year, believe it or not.
Do we have any eclipses coming up over the next two years?
No, I looked, I think it's like 2080, so I think we're good for that.
So 2425 is just here as a reference piece then?
2425 is as a reference, you have already approved it, it's really a reference piece, so you can see it's a spitting image. Well, to my point, yes.
Any other comments? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. Closing comments? Let's, let's start, where did we start last time? So you want to start down here now? Okay.
Thank you for coming, everyone. Let's see, we'll start with the most important thing first, the best day of the year is next week, so be there, it'll be great, it's Turkey Day. After that, I think honestly, the most exciting thing for the month, for last month for me wasn't necessarily a Warren thing, but the airshow review coming back in Cumberland and Hancock County, which was just, it, it was like a nice routine, return to normalcy for everyone, like, it's not been there for a while and it was back, and we got to see planes flying, it's always fun. Other than that, obviously, I participated in Invision Day and, and working with other public ed people, getting started on planning for next year's legislative session because that's the time that we're at.
Good. LaShawna?
Thank you, everyone. It's been a long day. Thanks, everyone, for, who participated in the Fall Fest and the Peace Walk, all the admin that was out. Dr. Hanson, thank you for allowing it. We heard great feedback, so we'll start earlier this year so we can make sure everybody gets involved. There's a lot of giveaways going on in our district for Thanksgiving, so please, please, please check our websites to participate in that, and then we'll be getting out the holiday information for our families for our toy drive. So good night, everyone, and be safe, and let's get ready to start again in the morning.
Well, I just want to say ditto to everything that's been said, and I just want to say, hey, Warren, that's why we are the pride of the East Side. We always have great things going on, and oh my gosh, those kids, that was, that just really touched my heart. They did a great job from Lakeside and all, growing those vegetables. I was really impressed, so thank you, and I enjoyed my time at the movies with the popcorn. So thank you, Dr. Hanson and Marcus, for making that happen. Thank you.
Kevin?
I would just like to extend a thank you from people that have stopped me on the street and wasn't aware of all the things that's going on in Warren, all the outreach and Morehead and things, and they were like, well, I didn't, I've never heard no school doing that, or things like that. So your work, the work is being noticed and it's been well-received, and thank you for them, and I thank you myself for just allowing me to be a part.
Julie?
I want to, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the legislative forum was moved to February, February 3rd. Thank you for that. I think that was due to Rachel and I being in Washington DC on the actual previous weekend, so I appreciate you considering us, wanting you to do that. So mark your calendars for February 3rd, pack the house, this room, for our legislative forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We always consider you when we are doing some stuff, so that's just what we do. Anyway, meeting adjourned.